Good morning, I want to welcome everybody to the Ad-Hoc Police Reform Committee Hearing. Today is Friday, October 23rd. If I could get the clerk to, in fact, we have a quorum. If I could get the clerk to read today's items, then we'll jump right into the meeting.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. We would like me to call the role first, or the attendance. Call the role for attendance.
Well, yeah, go right ahead.
Councilmember Herb Wesson.
I am here.
Councilmember Paul Coretts.
Present.
Councilmember John Lee. Councilmember Gilbert Sadio. Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson.
Yes, present.
You have a quorum, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you can read the items and then let's get started.
Item number one is a motion from Councilmembers Harris Dawson, Bonin, Price, Wesson, relative to alternative models and methods that do not rely on armed law enforcement to achieve transportation policy objectives. And item number two is a motion from Councilmembers Price, O'Farrell, Harris Dawson, Wesson, relative to directing the Los Angeles Police Department to report in regard to providing a plan to enhance community policing and procedural justice training standards in the department, including duty to intercede, crisis intervention, and de-escalation, as well as the use of force standards set by AB 392 and SB 230, and how force is used when dealing with large crowds, such as those found at the numerous peaceful protests recently across the city and related matters.
Okay, thank you. I do want to thank Mr. Coretts and Mr. Harris Dawson for being here today. I think we're going to move directly into public comment, but do you want to read the rules on public comment? Or the instructions as to how individuals can call in? Mr. Clerk?
Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 161-900-6244. Again, the call-in number is 1-669-254-5252, and the meeting ID is 161-900-6244. And then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participants' ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. And the audio for this meeting is broadcast live on the Internet at www.lacity.org backslash government backslash follow meetings backslash council hyphen committee hyphen meetings. And the live audio can also be heard at 213-621-CITY, or 818-904-9450.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go directly into public comment.
Caller with the last four digits 4914, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits 4914, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Courtney Williams, and I'm from Community Coalition, item two. Item two, and I just wanted to share my personal testimony on why I feel this motion needs to be moved. I was stopped on racial profiling. I was stopped and questioned on why I was able to afford a luxury car at my age. They did a lot of questioning, personal issues, and never was ticketed. I was also stopped at a weekly checkpoint that we don't need, and I was getting my driver's license out of my ID out of my trunk, and practically had guns pulled on me. And I just want to stress how we need to move unarmed police officers from traffic stops. It's already been proven in data that we have in black and brown communities, a big large percentage of stops, and it is causing, you know, mental health issues, as far as the fear and anxiety and the stress that you go under once you're pulled over. And I think this can be something that needs to be actually...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so very much for calling. Next caller.
Caller with the last four digits 6764, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits 6764, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits 6764, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits 7543, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning, thank you for having me today. I'd like to comment on item one.
Yes, you have one minute, and please state your name.
Yes. Oh, my name is Lionel, from the San Fernando Valley, calling because I support this motion. I am open-minded to reforming and changing the policy to make better for all Angelenos, including myself, and I'm open to see changes to policing in our communities. Thank you. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next.
Caller with the last four digits 3052, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'm speaking related to item number one. My name is Melinda Kukani, and I'm a Senior Policy Associate at Children's Defense Fund California. We champion policies and programs that provide all children with the resources and opportunities they deserve to successfully transition into adulthood. This is one of those policies. CDF California is also a member of the Push L.A. Coalition, and through our work, we know that young people, especially black and brown youth, are disproportionately targeted and impacted by traffic violations that often lead to interactions with police and arrests, leading to long-term impact on their health, well-being, and future trajectories. Prior to my time at Children's Defense Fund, I was an attorney with Public Council Transition Age Youth Project. My position existed because the collateral consequences of being raised by a system are endless. The most common collateral consequence was traffic citations. Of the 200 clients we represented each year, over 80% had outstanding traffic tickets. As a result, I spent far too many hours sitting in the back of Metropolitan Courthouse courtrooms, waiting for my cases to be called, waiting to plead my client's circumstances that they were on their way to work.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caller with the last four digits 0222, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits 0222, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Shadifer Smith, and I'm calling from Community Coalition, and I'd like to speak on item number, both one and two, actually, related to the alternative policing models and the research behind that. As a black woman who has had many, well, not really many, but who has had encounters with the police, and having to deal with the anxiety and the stress of what that particular situation was going to look like in the end, I think that it's time that we look at alternatives to policing and unarmed responses to traffic violations or traffic stops. There's a lot of anxiety and stress that comes with communities that are overpoliced related to this area, and if we could use officers that do not have weapons on them, we could likely reduce some of the stress and anxiety in these communities as it relates to these stops and de-escalate some of the situations that happen when people get pulled over by the police. Thank you.
No, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caller with the last four digits 6223, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Okay, my name is Maraki Adams-Sagerd. I'd like to speak on items one and two.
You have two minutes.
Okay. I didn't prepare anything incredible, but I just need to say that we need to live in a society where we can, black and brown people and all people can feel comfortable seeing in the midst of a traffic stop, and that these sort of incidences should not end in violence, as they so often do, and that we need a new system, we need a new forum in which we can have traffic stops and violations occur without our livelihoods being at stake. That's all I really need to say. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Caller with the last four digits 6748, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Okay, my name is Karen Bowdre. I am speaking on items one and two.
You have two minutes.
I feel very strong... Go ahead.
You have two minutes.
Go ahead. Okay. I feel very strongly that armed policemen need to be removed from traffic stops. As has been stated, there is data and information on why this is dangerous, especially to black and brown people. There have been too many opportunities that the police have had to be able to train. I don't understand why consistently, even though they're supposedly trained, they consistently kill black and brown people at minor traffic stops. And so, based on this, we really need to remove that. I'm sorry that it's amusing to you that people are killed. I yield my time, and I'm also from BLM LA and Long Beach.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits 6273, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hello? Hi, my name is Jared Tolbert, and I am a member of BLM LA. I wanted to speak on item number one.
You have one minute.
I definitely believe that we need to take guns away from police officers, especially when it comes to minor violations. It's too often that these situations escalate and ultimately result in death. And, I mean, this really, yes, this does this proportionally affect black and brown people, but this is affecting all citizens in LA. So, you know, we need to make sure that these officers just don't have that opportunity, especially for something so minor, like a taillight that's out, or a registration that is expired. Like, those are not good reasons for officers to be carrying weapons with them. So, I definitely believe we need to look to ulterior ways in order to police people when it comes to these things. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Caller with the last four digits 1676, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, hi, my name is Kevin, Sunrise Movement. I'd like to speak on item one and general public comment.
You have one minute.
Yeah, so, I want to echo what everyone else was saying about how we need to reduce encounters with the police, particularly for black and brown youth. So, having unarmed people doing traffic enforcement would be a great way to move toward that goal in reducing, you know, gun violence on the part of the police. I want to highlight the fact that somebody on the committee had a hot mic and laughed when one of the previous callers was, you know, stating that there are many police encounters that are deadly for black and brown people, and I don't think that's funny. I think that was inappropriate, and I think whoever that was should apologize. And I'd like to move on to my general public comment. So, a couple days ago, it looks like Councilmember Busciano...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the last four digits 9942, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Hampton Finney. I'm with Community Coalition. Mostly, you know me by "Dude." Good morning to everybody here.
Hold his time for a minute. Hey, dude, I coached this guy in Pop Warner football. Sorry, I just had to say that. Anyway, now restart his time. Hey?
Hello? Yes, I'm a member of Community Coalition, and I had a promising career with football and boxing at a young age, and doing minor traffic stops, and me being a young person being stopped on a bike, it resulted in me being put inside of a, being handcuffed inside of a car, and it changed my lifestyle. I don't think that the LAPD needs to be allowed to use the force that they use, and the techniques that they use, to do what they're doing for as minor traffic stops. However, we have come up with some research for la dot and other resources that Los Angeles can use to better the situations. I yield my time.
Okay, take care. Next speaker.
Caller with the last four digits 5751, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning, hello?
Good morning. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yeah, hi, my name is Mathews Kidani. I'd like to speak on items one and two.
You have two minutes.
Good morning, my name is Mathews. I'm with BLM LA. I just wanted to take a second to say I'm a lifelong Angelino, a black man, and my entire life, traffic stops have been a frightening experience, as they are for most brown and black people, and as so many others have said, there's plenty of data that shows that traffic stops disproportionately affect brown and black people, and that the LAPD often uses minor violations as a means to kind of peer into black and brown people's lives and affect them in so many negative ways. It's clear that these traffic stops by the LAPD almost inevitably lead to some kind of worst-case scenario, death, recidivism, people go back to jail. I've always asked if I'm on probation whenever I'm stopped by police for minor stops, but none of my white peers are, which is an interesting fact. The simple fact is this, the longer we continue LAPD to stop, the longer we continue to allow LAPD to stop people for minor violations, we allow black and brown deaths. And so, we need to put an end to that immediately. It's causing a great deal of trauma within our communities, and we're aware of it. So, while we should look at other models, we just need to get rid of the LAPD's involvement in those traffic stops immediately. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you for calling in. Next.
Caller with the last four digits 7964, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi. Good morning, my name is Jeanne Valen. I'd like to speak on items one and two, please.
You have two minutes.
I want to start by saying it's impossible to give meaningful comment prior to hearing today's discussion about each of these motions. The information online doesn't seem to have changed since your last meeting about these motions. Item number one, very strongly in favor of removing police from transportation stops. This doesn't mean unarmed LAPD staff. It should be non-LAPD staff. Sadly, police reform always ends up resulting in an expansion of the police. Tasking the department with reforming itself is meaningless and just a repeat of what has been done in the past when public outcry's about policing occur. Organizations like LA CAN, Stop LAPD Spying, and Black Lives Matter have been providing the public the only real truths about the realities of policing in our city. These organizations are the ones that should be tasked with reimagining what public safety looks like, because they have not only been providing that to the community, but also they've been holding the police and police commissioners accountable by exposing racist police practice in this city. It's time to think about defunding the police, and that has to be meaningful. It has to be reflective of what the People's Budget LA, which is led by BLM LA, is asking for. It's very clear that we want a reimagined society that can be attained by distributing funds, divesting from police, and investing in communities. Those funds can come from defunding the police today. We have billions of dollars that the city is already allocating to the police that can be shifted to do this without it being the department reimagining itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller with the last four digits 0739, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits 0739, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Elany Johnson, item number one.
You have one minute.
Yeah, I'm calling in support of the removal of police officers from minor traffic violations. I am a member of BLM LA, and we know that minor traffic violations lead to, often lead to death. There's absolutely no reason that we need to have unarmed police officers pulling folks over. And I also do want to, you know, echo the previous caller's words in that I hope that this doesn't in any way lead to increased funding, or a different set of, you know, something that doesn't look like the police, or something that is not the police, but is still has the ability to inflict harm. Please highly consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the last four digits 3403, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Kim Isaacs, one and two.
You have two minutes.
I just want to reiterate what I'm hearing. First of all, that person laughing is disgusting, and they absolutely need to apologize. That's just completely inappropriate. Secondly, I absolutely think that we need to have someone else instead of the police for traffic stops. It is dangerous to black and brown people, and it's dangerous to white people as well, disproportionately black and brown people are the ones that get harassed, are the ones that get pulled out of their car. My girlfriend's son, they illegally searched his car and found cigarettes, and then wanted to charge him because he was underage, which they ended up dropping because they knew it was an illegal search. They are constantly looking for reasons to hurt us. They do not de-escalate. They escalate these situations when we are terrified, and they should know that walking up to someone's car, that the first job they should do is de-escalate the situation and calm the person down. But they don't. They escalate it. And we need unarmed workers to perform traffic stops, not unarmed police, police persons, police officers, unarmed, someone else. Whoever handles the parking, whatever, there's somebody else in the DMV that could handle it. This is just beyond, this is the basic human right is to feel safe, and the police make us feel unsafe, especially during traffic stops. I could listen to numbers of people that have been killed as a result of traffic stops. Sandra Bland for one, for not having on a turn signal. I mean, it was ridiculous how that man treated her for not using a turn signal when he was following her. I mean, it's, no, like, this is, this is basic human decency that we are not receiving by the police, and there's no more reform to be had. We've tried it. They need to be removed from traffic stops, period.
Thank you.
So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits 5699, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits 5699, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Good morning, yes. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Maria Isabel Radlitz, items one and two.
You have two minutes.
I would, thank you, sir. I'm calling because I seriously feel threatened when any police officer is even around me, because I know that as a person of color, I, with experience of having seen stops, I'm 57 years old, and I'm still considered black and driving while black, and I would like to see that police officers are not in charge of traffic violations, because there's so many other things that they do need to come out to, which they don't, because they're too busy doing things they shouldn't be doing, and that don't need unarmed police officer. I don't know, I know that they probably have to be filling some quota, and that is something that I think is just horrible, that they have to be abusing the public. And we need the LADOT. I am a member of Community Coalition, I'm a member of Black Lives Matter, and block clubs. I try to be as public assistant as possible to, for the community, but still, it doesn't take away from the fact that we can't take away our black skin, and we are targeted. That is, like the slaves in the plantation, where the master comes and he kills, and rapes, and murders, and does whatever he wants, and then there's no accountability. Police officers have no accountability at all. Whenever I was stopped lately, I went to fight the ticket because I was, I knew I was on the right, and that the officer just targeted me, and I was told that they had to take the police officer's word, not mine, because he's a foreign officer. So, it doesn't matter what we do or what we say.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caller with the last four digits 1047, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Celeste Annie with The Love We Don't See, and I'd love to speak on items one and two.
You have two minutes.
So, I'm happy that this motion is being brought forward, because it gets us to the crux of one of the big issues, one of the root issues with the system of policing. One of the root issues with the system of policing is that we ask police to do too much. We ask them to respond and resolve to all of society's issues. They aren't trained to respond to all of society's issues. So, what does that leave? We have one part of society who gets deprived of resources, because we've put so much into police departments to respond to things, where you're depriving the community of resources, and then tasking the police department to solve everything, but then at the same time, you're not equipping them to solve everything. It's like you're setting both sides up to fail, and we know this is, this goes on, you know, there's a duality in this, because not only do the lives of the citizens become more at risk because of the over-dependence in policing, but then now also the officers themselves, their lives are at risk, because we're sending them into situations that are harmful and detrimental to their lives and their families and stuff. So, this is, this is the start, and then the thing is, we don't want to masquerade this and change this into something where we're just going to create another department within the police to fund this, okay? Because if we're asking for the police to do less within our communities, that means funds need to be taken out of their budget to go to the community, and we have to understand, and I'll finish on this. to understand, and I'll finish on this, we have to understand that when we start to distribute power evenly, it makes the lives of everybody safer and better. When it's concentrated in one individual spot, that's when you start seeing the inequalities and the injustices that we're seeing now. So I love the motion that's being brought up today. I hope we continue down this road.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, next.
Caller with the last four digits five one seven nine, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, council members. Oh, good morning. Uh, this is Karen from Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council. How are you today?
Great.
Um, I'm calling, um, regarding both items one and two as a, um, black woman born and raised in Los Angeles, and also a son who has been racially profiled in my own driveway. I agree with the other callers. I think, you know, we actually wrote a community impact statement on not defunding the police for other matters but with reforms, and this is an area that definitely needs to be reformed. While I feel comfortable in my own community with the, uh, relationships we have with our police, I definitely do not feel comfortable going outside my community and, uh, the possibilities. So as a black woman, mother and grandmother, I, uh, support, uh, this change. Thank you.
No, thank you. Next.
Caller with the last four digits nine five two one, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits nine five two one, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Next.
Caller with the last four digits nine five two one, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits five six nine nine, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
You know, I think we have, we might be having some technical difficulties. I, I hear someone faintly in the background. Can we just put a, a hold on things for a moment, and can we do a quick check? Okay, why don't we go back to the, the last caller that you, uh, requested? Sorry about that, people.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Caller with the last four digits five six nine nine, you're unmuted. Please, uh, state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Next caller.
Caller with the last four digits six eight three eight, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my, my name is Joy Stallworth, and I wanted to say that I would like for the motion to pass. We need police reform. I live in South Central Los Angeles. I have small kids, and here's an example of why we need police reform. We're not criminals, but when we see the police coming, my kids getting nervous, they get scared, they get tense. Mom, make sure you're doing everything you're doing so that we don't get pulled over. We need reform. Our kids should not be afraid.
Thank you so very much.
Caller with the last four digits eight zero one nine, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Caller with the last four digits eight zero one nine, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Next.
Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hello?
Yes.
It wa, I'm sorry, it was a delay. I pressed the line, I pressed star six like three times, I apologize.
No problem.
But I'd like to speak on, um, number one and two, please.
Okay, go ahead, two minutes, identify yourself.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, my name is Jelani Hendricks, representing SEIU Local 2015. Uh, we have an opportunity to change the way law enforcement interacts with our residents, and there's an abundant amount of data and evidence that shows law enforcement in Los Angeles is biased and communities of color are disproportionately impacted in a negative way. A routine traffic stop shouldn't result in violence, harassment, or a death sentence. If we are going to prioritize the safety of our black and brown residents in Los Angeles, particularly our black and brown youth, we have to explore alternatives to policing and reimagine what public safety looks like and feels like. We need meaningful, meaningful community engagement to identify solutions, and it's critical that we engage those directly impacted by the problem. For some people, this is an issue, this is an issue that is a matter of life and death, and this year we've witnessed the biggest racial justice movement of our lifetimes. We are living in a historical moment, and it's time for change. Let's make sure Los Angeles is on the right side of history. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you for calling. Next, uh, caller.
Caller with the last four digits zero two two two, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits eight three eight six, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits eight three eight six, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits eight three eight six, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits seven nine six zero, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits seven nine six zero, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits of seven nine six zero, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits one one five nine, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Speaking on items one and two, my name is Channing Martinez. I'm the director of organizing for the Labor Community Strategy Center. I wanna start by first thanking the council members that brought this motion. I think that it's a great step in the right direction. Uh, we're also part of the Push L.A. Coalition, and we firmly believe in stopping the stops. Uh, I also ran for LA City Council in District Ten, and one of my platforms was calling for the LE.
Did we lose it? Please continue, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. There was an interruption that said added to the waiting room. Um, I ran for LA City Council and ran on the platform of cutting the LE PD budget by fifty percent, and I firmly do believe that we think this is a great move and the right stop, but we also realize that enforcement, not just the LE PD, is the problem. Enforcement with any type of force of a traffic stop that's resulting in something as menial as a out, uh, license, uh, out really symbolizes that the city has a war against black people in particular, who are fifty percent of the prison population, the homeless population, and unemployment. We're calling on the LA City Council to both pass this motion, but to eventually move towards defunding the police, which is the ultimate solution of stopping the war against the black community. Again, thanks to the council members that, uh, brought this, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you for calling. Let's go ahead for the next.
Caller with the last four digits six two two three, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits six two two three, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits six two two three, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last four digits five six seven four, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, good morning, my name is Gilbert Johnson, and I'll be speaking on items one and two.
You have two minutes.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning again, uh, City Council, uh, my name is Gilbert Johnson with Community Coalition, the Push L.A. Coalition, and Black Lives Matter L.A., calling in to urge you all to pass this motion so that it can be moved into the General City Council for a larger vote. Um, I know that we have to work, continue doing the work to help address the long negative history of racial brutality and injustice between communities of color and the police, and as a lifelong resident of South Central Los Angeles, I know for a fact that policing looks different in my community than wider and more affluent communities. Uh, currently, I see police at every corner, every which way in my community, and it does not help me feel any safer at all, but it actually resurfaces a lot of the trauma that I've experienced at the hands of law enforcement since a young age. I remember being thrown out of the car, shotgun to the back of my head, thrown up against walls, uh, genitals fondled, the whole nine, and it just did not leave, uh, a good taste in my mouth, and that's why myself and many of the folks that we work with across South Central are calling for real bold change when it comes to police and, and the sheriffs, and that's why we also urge you to make sure that folks that we are working with in solidarity are at the table, um, and the folks that are most proximate to this issue of police violence and state sanction violence have a real say-so, um, and are part of a transparent process that really elevates our voices and our lived experiences. So we again thank you all for, uh, moving this motion forward in advance, and we look forward to doing the long-term work, um, to really reimagine public safety and defund the police and dismantle, um, all mass incarceration. Thank you.
No, thank you for calling in, okay. Next caller.
Caller with the last four digits six seven six four, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Uh, Nancy, and just general comments, please.
You have one minute.
Um, I, I think it's a real bad move, um, and a good idea to have these officers go unarmed, um, during these traffic stops. Not only is it gonna jeopardize the officer's life, but it's also gonna jeopardize, um, the, the communities, um, being stopped while black and brown. Um, actually, I am a brown woman, and I've been stopped for breaking the law, for going through a red light, or not stopping at a stop sign. So I think this is a bad idea. We should rethink this. This is jeopardizing people's lives in the community as well as the police officer. So I do not support this at all, and this should not be, uh, something that should be agreed upon, or something that should be, uh, um, should be brought forth in any type of agreement whatsoever. So I am totally against this. Um, you're putting people's lives in danger.
Thank you for calling. Next.
Caller with the last four digits six one seven one, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Hello, committee members. Hello, committee members, my name is Chauncey. Thank you for having us here and today. Um, I'm calling and speaking on items one and two. Um, I'm a representative of Advancement Project California, um, a racial justice organization with over twenty years of expertise in policy research and advocacy. Advancement Project California is also a member of the Push L.A. Coalition. In regards to, um, item number one, um, we recommend that law enforcement interactions with communities of color be decreased through your motion on alternative models and methods to traffic safety in order to protect communities of color from biased policing. And to accomplish this objective, uh, we recommend that the committee, uh, Los Angeles Department of Transportation, and all other relevant stakeholders prioritize robust community engagement. All too often, when it comes to public policy issues, um, the stakeholders with decision-making power tend to look to people on the ground to identify their problems, but they can often be left out of the process when it comes to determining the solutions that actually end up being implemented. So for this reason, I'd really like to urge the committee to make sure that robust community engagement remains at the forefront of the process for developing the motion and ultimate end result. And in addition to robust community engagement, I have four recommendations that I would like the committee to consider in moving forward. One is to prioritize stopping the stops. Um, from all the, the testimony that you've heard thus far, people of color are fed up and sick of being dis, uh, discriminated against, subjected to police violence and misconduct. In addition, uh, at the essence of the motion, there needs to be a shift in authority. The role of police is far too broad and expansive and needs to be restricted, and then siphon off that which the Department of Transportation can take care of. In addition, we have significant concerns about the use of automated enforcement technologies. There's research to indicate that they-
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can we get the next speaker?
Caller with the last four digits one one nine one, please use star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Valerie Stacker, and good morning to the panel. I'm addressing, uh, one and two items. I have a small little testimony, uh, I, several years ago, uh, police stopped me. I was at a stop sign. I'm a senior citizen, and I had my grandson in the car. It was just getting dark. I was at the stop sign. He ran me down. He said, "Pull over." Uh, the lights flashing, he flashed in the lights in the backseat. Uh, then he came around to me, and he said, "Do you know why I stopped you?" I said, "No, I do not." He said, "Because you didn't have your turn signal on." Okay, there was another incident, uh, when the pandemic began. I had paid for my registration, and this police officer, he made a U-turn in the street, you know, running me down. I pulled over in the, uh, parking lot. I have high blood pressure. I'm like, "What is going on?" Okay, he says, "Do you know why I stopped you?" I said, "No, I do not, you officer." He said, "Oh." I said, "Can I see your registration?" He seemed that the registration had been paid, but I had to do a smog and different things. He gave me an infraction. I, I didn't even know what an infraction was, kicking. And I just, at that time, my blood pressure went straight up. I'm sixty-six years old. That was just uncalled for. I mean, and even the one at night, it, it, it's just, it boggles my mind. I feel that for a solution, you need a task force that deals in traffic. Also, the police can run into even the traffic people that would do this- people that would do this solution. You might have somebody, when they stop up for traffic like that, it could be they have warrants. Then it's going to escalate. You see what I'm saying? So, this really needs to be thought through.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to take a couple of more callers, and then I want to begin the discussion. We might be able to get back to the rest of the callers, but at this time, I do not want to leave a quorum. Today should be an action day. So, I'm going to take two more callers, give you each one minute each, and then we're going to get into the conversation. So, if you could call on the next caller.
Caller with the last four digits, one, three, nine, one. Please use star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi. Please state your name, and you have one minute.
My name is Jennifer Gijalba. I'm speaking on item one. I just want to reflect on the fact that community members showed up today during a pandemic when we're all struggling. We took the time and energy to call in because that's how important this is for us. In this call, I'm hearing so much unity, so much advocacy. You have people from all over L.A. calling in to say that LAPD cannot handle traffic violations, that we do not feel safe. People have literally died because of minor traffic violations. In South L.A., we are so overpoliced. You drive for 10 minutes, and we're passed by so many cop cars. But you already know that. The data is there. The community members today share their painful experiences with law enforcement. So, I'm just hoping that as we move forward with moving away from LAPD doing traffic violations, that the committee continues to engage with black and brown communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last caller for now is?
Caller with the last four digits, six, six, one, seven. Please use star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello. Please state your name, and you have one minute.
My name's Angelica Sanchez, and I'm calling in regards to items one and two. I'm calling about police being defunded and for them to be taken out of schools, as well as like bus stops. My son, he's Mexican, but he looks white. He was going to school at Vermin Day right here in South L.A. I'm an Angeleno myself, and he was stopped for racial profile. He was stopped because he looked white, he had blue eyes, and didn't fit the description of being in that city. Now, that had him go to school late, but I'm just saying, you know, we need to defund these police officers or have different tactics to be able to approach a high school student. If he's not black, if he's not brown, they get stopped because he looked not well to be student for that city. So, I agree with everybody that's been calling. I'm from Community Coalition, and we should put more money into coalitions that are helping the cities, the community, and I wait the rest of my time. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. In fact, let me just take a moment to thank everyone who adjusted their schedules to call in and share your thoughts with us. It means a lot. So, again, thank you all for being engaged. There are, we'll try to get to some callers later, but I want to make sure that we begin our conversation on this item while we have a quorum. I do believe, members, if you are agreeable, that we can move forward on item two. And so, on item two, we will adopt the motion unless there's any objection. So, I'd like to, Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Coretts, if you guys are good, then that'll be the order.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an additional recommendation on item number two.
Go ahead.
Oh, am I on item number one? I'm sorry, wrong item. I rescind that.
It happens, my brother. Okay, so, where it relates to that item, again, we'll adopt the motion. So, that brings us now to item one. Let me just say this quickly if I can. You know, I do believe that we in the city of Los Angeles have a huge responsibility, that we are leaders. We live in a special place, a diverse place. We have progressive residents in our city, progressive leaders in our city, and I'm proud to be part of a body that is looking at reimagining the definition of public safety. So, it's an honor to be part of this motion and be the point person on the motion dealing with homelessness, mental health, individuals under the influence where it relates to unarmed professional responses. So, it's my understanding, one of the makers of the motion would like to comment at this point in time. So, if it's okay with Mr. Coretts and Mr. Harris Dawson, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bonin, who is with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on the motion, and it's been a real, real deep honor to co-sponsor this with you, Mr. Wesson, and then Mr. Harris Dawson, and with Mr. Price, and to ride along with you on the ship you have been driving towards reimagining public safety. I'm speaking today not just as one of the co-signers of the motion, but also as the chair of the Transportation Committee and as a member of the Board of Directors of L.A. Metro. Over the past several months, as our city and our nation have come to this moment of profound reckoning over inequity and systemic racism, I've tried to focus my work on issues of the intersection of transportation and equity and policing. And really nationwide, the transportation sector has been trying to work on that issue, guided by the precept that if you can't move around safely and freely, you're really not free. And in L.A. Metro, we launched an initiative the same time the four of us put this motion in. And as a result of that, we've launched an effort there to reimagine public safety on mass transit and at stations, and we're forming a community-led and passenger-led public safety advisory committee to guide that work, understanding really what we've heard today is that reimagining public safety needs to come from the bottom up and from the community perspective, and encourage us to take that approach here with this motion as well. As I've been listening, in my part of town, I've been hearing stuff, and I just wanted to share with you and with this body that while the demographics of my district are very different, and the life experiences of many people in my district are very different, I fundamentally believe that my part of town and all parts of town will support the direction of this initiative and of the work we're trying to do here. A few months ago, as we were all beginning to reimagine public safety and have that discussion, I surveyed thousands of my constituents and asked them what they thought the proper response was to a range of situations. And like most people, and you've heard it in the motion you just approved the other day, Mr. Wesson, most people think armed law enforcement is not the appropriate first response to nonviolent emergency calls about homelessness or mental health. What I also heard is that by very wide margins, people feel that armed officers are not the appropriate first response to most transportation matters. In my surveys, more than 70% of the people said that they did not think armed law enforcement was the appropriate response for speeding tickets, enforcing traffic laws, and moving violations. More than 75% said they preferred a response other than armed law enforcement for responding to traffic collisions and taking reports. 88% said something other than armed law enforcement for fare evasion on things like Metro or L.A.'s dash system. And more than 90% said they would prefer something other than armed law enforcement for helping DOT out with traffic control at big events. Also, you know, in my part of town, I get a lot of people who ask for more neighborhood patrols and better 911 response times. And they know that freeing officers from the duties of traffic enforcement would free up tremendous resources for fighting and preventing violent crime and burglary and theft. And frankly, I also think they know, and they heard what a number of the callers have said today, that a public safety system that makes people of some zip codes and some races feel safe, but makes people of other races and other zip codes and other demographics feel threatened, isn't the kind of system we need and that we can do better. So, clearly, a lot of work to do, a lot of issues to work through, but I think it's clear to most people that this is a direction we can move to achieve racial justice and frankly, better policing for everybody. Berkeley's on the road to this, Cambridge, New York City, Philly, the metro D.C. area, but through the work of this committee, the leadership of the members of this committee and the work of this council, L.A. can really be in the forefront and be the first big city to really reimagine public safety and its intersection with transportation and mobility. And I thank you for the time and the consideration this morning and the leadership.
Thank you. I want to make sure that everybody knows that some time ago, we were joined by Councilmember Lee. He is with us. So, again, welcome. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Harris Dawson at this point in time for some thoughts. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all the folks, but especially you, who helped put this motion forward. Glad we were joined by our chair of the Transportation Committee and one of our representatives to MTA for this discussion as well. I want to talk about a little bit of history and go way, way, way back, and I hope the members will indulge me in this, because I want folks to understand how deep and how traumatic these experiences can be for people and how they bring up generational trauma. During slavery in the United States, we know that part of the United States had slavery and part of the United States didn't have slavery. We also know that while the overwhelming majority of black people were slaves, there were lots of people, black people, that weren't slaves. Well, the policy in the United States at that time, in the North and in the South, if you were in New York or Pennsylvania or wherever, if you were a black person, you could be stopped by a category of people that were referred to as the low whites. These were whites that were informed by, that were employed by, as bounty hunters, by slave owners. The low whites could stop any black person anywhere they saw them and demand to see their papers to prove that they weren't a slave. And if you couldn't produce papers, they were allowed to take you into custody and take you back to wherever they thought you might have been a slave. And if you resisted, they could kill you, and there would be no charges against you. And that was just the way you lived in the United States. After the fall of slavery, the same thing applied, except you weren't returned to slavery, but you could be lynched. And we had lynchings all the way up until the early 1950s, which is relatively recent history. So, when we have this policy where an armed officer anywhere in this country, just by virtue of you being in an automobile, can pull you over and demand to see papers, and if you resist in any way, it can kill you, take your life, and go through a process and be found, and the findings, and it happens all the time, that they can be found that that was completely within the law. And in fact, we've gone even further than that now, at least in California, but I think other places too. Now, you can get stopped on a bicycle. Just riding a bicycle, any officer at any time can decide, "I want to see if you're legally riding this bicycle." And you are confronted by a person with a gun. And I raise that because sometimes people talk about traffic stops as if they're benign activities. And they are by definition not benign activities when the person confronting you is armed, and you know, and you know that they know, there's a possibility that they can injure you or take your life, definitely take your property, and be seen as innocent in the eyes of the law. And so, that's the history that we're dealing with when we take on this subject, and it's why you'll hear people talk about it and express it in a very, very painful way. Here in the city of Los Angeles, we have many folks from the Push L.A. Coalition call in. You know, just two years ago, we found some very troubling data. Three-fourths of the traffic stops in the city of Los Angeles are black or Latino men, black or Latino people. Three-fourths of the people in Los Angeles are not black or Latino. Certainly, three-fourths of the people who operate automobiles are not black or Latino in the city of Los Angeles. If you were black, you had a four times greater chance to be searched. If you were Latino, you had a three times greater chance to be searched after that traffic stop. Most of the traffic stops resulted in nothing, no traffic violations, no further police action. I want to compliment the chief of police and the leadership of Los Angeles Police Department on this measure. When that data was brought to them, and the chief saw, "Oh, we're doing all these stops, and it's not necessarily producing anything," they changed strategies. And so, they stopped that as a regular practice, and we will see the new data in a very, very short amount of time. But what the chief demonstrated is that you don't have to do this. There are other ways to get at traffic safety. So, that's just some of the background that I want to make sure is a part of the discussion and that people remember when we're trying to figure out how to come up with a new policy that makes sense and how to play a leadership role among American cities as we deal with this very, very tough, very, very tough question. We recognize that there are some cases when there are people who do, who the interaction does need to be with an armed officer, but we also know that there are a whole lot of situations where they don't, and we want to get at that. There are a set of recommendations that are before us today that essentially asks for a review and research on these matters that'll come back to this committee. I want to add one, Mr. Chair, that directs the L.A. Department of Transportation to create an advisory task force that will make recommendations to L.A. DOT that they'll bring back to this committee and perhaps to the Transportation Committee if Mr. Bonin would like, and that looks at alternatives to traffic safety and enforcement in the city of Los Angeles and around the United States. And so, with that, I know we will have instructions before us. I'm fully supportive of those, but really eager to continue the conversations with law enforcement, with traffic experts, but most importantly, with community and with my colleagues, to see if we can move to a new day here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Coretts, did you have some questions?
Yes, questions and comments.
Go right ahead, sir.
First of all, I think we all agree on the goal here. We have to eliminate racial profiling. We shouldn't be talking about driving while black in Los Angeles. That has to end. And I think it's great that we're looking at ways to do that. However, I can't pretend that I don't have concerns about how to do this safely. So, I think we have to approach this very carefully. Traffic stops and vehicle code enforcement can turn very quickly. I know DOT officers who have the more benign task of placing a ticket on someone's windshield for an expired meter in the past have been assaulted both verbally and physically. And the big question is, how can we be certain that it's safe to turn over more dangerous duties to an unarmed response? I think we have to approach this carefully because one, I'm not sure you call them officers, but whatever the person is that is unarmed in making a traffic stop, one of those people gets shot and killed by a driver, and your program is probably over. And so, we need to address this with all due thought, and I'd like that to be a question that is considered. Also, who is going to be doing this? Is it Department of Transportation officers that write tickets now? Will they be making traffic stops? And does the- And does the Department of Transportation want this task? Uh, if not, who's doing it and who actually wants to do it? Also, we, we should get statistics on what the problem really is in Los Angeles. How often are black and brown drivers actually getting shot in these traffic stops? Do we have any statistics? Do we have statistics on how often we've had unnecessary violent confrontations, um, with armed officers making traffic stops? Also, is this allowed legally in California? Have we looked at, uh, DMV regulations and whether, uh, unarmed civilians are, uh, allowed legally to do this and whether we would need to, uh, make changes in state law? Also, I think we need to look at the places that we're comparing it to, because we are going to get a report back on who else is doing this throughout the world. We have to recognize if this is a small town in the Midwest or Europe, um, it's not the same circumstance as a large, very diverse metropolitan area like Los Angeles. So hopefully we'll, we'll find an apples-to-apples comparison that actually tells us, uh, that we can do this safely. One other thing we should be looking at is, are there cities whose police departments actually do traffic stops better? Where driving while black isn't a fear? Um, where we don't create violent confrontations where they're not necessary? Are there such places? And, uh, can we learn anything from them as well? Uh, is there a way to, uh, create policing, um, that works on this issue? And lastly, as Mr. Harris Dawson flagged for us, uh, our chief has given a directive for this policy to end in LAPD. And can the chief give that direction to stop ra- racial profiling? And can it actually happen? Could this actually be a solution to our problem that seems simpler? Um, but could it work? I think we need to really look at all angles, because this is, this is not a, an unserious issue. Uh, we're taking a significant step. If it works, it certainly would be very positive. I'm sure LAPD would be happier to have their officers focus on, uh, another set of more violent crimes. But if it doesn't, and it actually endangers the people doing it, um, I think it's certainly a, a concern that needs to be addressed in the report back.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Coretts. Thank you for your thoughts. Thank you for your concerns. Uh, I'm going to call on, on Mr. Lee, but at the, uh, the end of this hearing, uh, the recommendations from this committee, from the chair, I think, address, uh, probably ninety-nine percent of the things that you, uh, uh, had some angst over. So, uh, I'd like to recognize Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, while, while I feel in my life, you know, I've been pulled over for, you know, no reason or being pulled out of my car and being frisked, uh, for, you know, just simply, you know, a, a simple tra- traffic violation. At the same time, I don't purport to, to understand the, the black and brown experience of, you know, being pulled over and, and, and fearing for my life. You know, a caller, uh, that called in earlier from my district, Karen Waters, is someone who I consider, uh, you know, a good friend of mine, and it's, it's, it's hard to hear her s- talk about, um, you know, that, you know, in my, in our, in, in her district and in our district, that she feels safe, but in other areas, she still feels, um, when she's involved in, in some type of, you know, traffic stop or being pulled over for whatever reason, that she still feels some sort of, you know, um, inherent danger for, you know, for her life. I mean, those issues, you know, obviously are of great concern to me, you know? But I also want to recognize that, that traffic stops and the unknown of what officers are, you know, are addressing are one of the most dangerous situations, you know, an officer has to deal with. Yeah, I just want to, I also want to make sure, like Councilman Coretts and Mr. Chair, I think you, you just said it, that it's being addressed in this of, you know, these are, if people are breaking the law, it has to be addressed by law enforcement. And do, what jurisdiction of it is of the city to change those laws? I mean, I know that you can't even have red or blue lights on your car unless you are of some type of law enforcement in the state of California. So, you know, I hope the report addresses that first and foremost, if, you know, if we even have that, what type of jurisdiction, or if that's a state jurisdiction, or even a constitutional one. I also, you know, just want to remind everybody, it, you know, it does not remove the oc-, you know, whether you're armed or unarmed, it doesn't remove the occupational danger of, you know, conducting a traffic stop. You know, I'm, I'm not sure that that is what gets the root sort of problem of what we are really trying to deal with today. And, and that, you know, if people are being targeted because of the color of their skin, you know, what other, what other changes that do we need to make within our society? I think that all those things are important, need to be addressed. I, you know, hearing, uh, Councilman, uh, Marquis Harris Dawson's comments about, you know, what has happened in the history of our nation, uh, is obviously of something that we all need to be paying attention to and, you know, need to be figuring out how we address that as a society. But, you know, also, traffic stops in our areas, in our city, have often resulted in pulling illegal firearms off our streets, uh, pulling violent criminals off our streets. Um, these are all important things to remember, uh, when, you know, when we're trying to address this sort of, you know, change in our society, that those things are, you know, we have to take all those things into account. And I hope that the, you know, when this report comes back, that all of those concerns are taken into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, members. Any other comments before we move forward with our recommendations?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just very quickly. We submitted language on our, uh, on our amendment. Uh, I think I screwed up how I read it, so, um, yeah, we submitted exact, uh, language to the clerk and to the chair.
So we ha- we do have clarification? Like, uh? You want to walk us through it? I have not seen it yet. We've got it, right? Okay, so then let's make sure that, that we correct that. You know, uh, members, and again, all of the public that called in, thank, thank all of you good folk for doing that. I want to thank the members for, uh, really being engaged in this conversation. And all I want to say is, you know, just because something is hard, just because something is difficult, that doesn't mean we can't try to do it. You know, I mean, uh, this, this is something that is important. This conversation needs to go forward, and I would wonder where we would just be as a country, where we'd be as a world, if people had just said, you know, three, four-hundred, five-hundred years ago, that's too hard, I'm not going to do it. Okay, yeah, this is tough, this is hard, but at least this moved forward. So I'm going to have the, uh, the, the clerk read, uh, the direction from, uh, this committee. Like I mentioned earlier, I think it, it handles a lot of the concerns that, uh, Mr. Coretts, uh, uh, mentioned and Mr. Lee as well. We want to do this thought out. We want to bring in the best. We want to get the, 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 the best suggestions and recommendations as, you know, as we, how do we proceed with this? So with that said, uh, Mr. Clerk, could you read the instructions from the chair?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Um, the first recommendation is to direct the Los Angeles Department of Transportation with assistance from the city administrative officer, the chief legislative analyst, the Los Angeles Police Department, and the city attorney to develop and issue a request for proposals, seeking a consultant to conduct a study on the feasibility of utilizing civilian enforcement of traffic laws for motorists, cyclists, and other forms of transportation occurring within the city of Los Angeles. Second recommendation is to direct that city department should consider the following in the development of the RFP as detailed in recommendation number one. A, a review of the Los Angeles Municipal Code, the California Vehicle Code, and other relevant traffic laws for any outdated enforcement sections that could be decriminalized or removed. B, a review of unarmed traffic enforcement techniques from around the United States, as well as any international models. C, the size of the city of Los Angeles in population and square mileage. D, the diversity of the city, including but not limited to racial demographics, the number of languages spoken, the number of people living in poverty, and any factors that may be relevant to developing this type of program to meet the needs of city residents. And the third recommendation is to direct the Los Angeles Police Department to report on the top five most cited traffic violations, as well as the number of vehicle stops and arrests for traffic enforcement slash violations, including data on the gender and ethnicity of those cited or arrested, broken down by Bureau, Traffic Division, and Station for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. And the, uh, additional recommendation from, uh, Councilmember Harris Dawson is to direct, uh, L.A. DOT to create an advisory task force that will make recommendations to L.A. DOT for traffic safety alternatives and to convene community meetings to solicit feedback about the needs in our neighborhoods.
Thank you so, so very, uh, much. So then, uh, without objection, uh, we'll adopt the recommendations of the chair as amended by, uh, Marquis Harris Dawson. So without objection, so ordered. Uh, Mr. Clerk, is there any additional business before this committee?
The desk is clear, sir.
I again thank all of you for your participation. This meeting is adjourned.